One, and welcome to the October tenth Riverhead Board of Education meeting. I'd just like to take role first, Mr. Connolly.
President.
Mr. Wallace.
President.
Ms. Healy.
President.
Mr. Scudder.
President.
Ms. Murphy.
President.
And Ms. Redmond.
Present.
All in here. Can I have a motion to enter into executive session to discuss the employment of a particular person or corporation?
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Connolly. Can I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Scudder. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? And motion approved. We'll go into executive session with back around seven o'clock. Thank you. Back for our Riverhead Board of Education, October sixth, October tenth meeting. Can I have a motion to re-enter public from executive session?
Motion.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. What happened to your, to your names? Everything moved around, Ms. Redmond.
You're me.
Who's playing as who today? Would you mind moving that? Thanks so much.
You're correct.
Anyway, thank you, Ms. Redmond. Can I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Scudder. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? And motion passes at seven twenty-seven. Could you please remain standing for a brief moment of silence for all those who are affected in Israel and Palestine? So we move on to our superintendent's report. So we have our acting superintendent, Dr. Gallotti.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Paul. So I'd like to start the evening by introducing Dr. Rosay, who is our business official. And this evening, we're going to have a presentation from Transfinder.
Good evening, Board of Education. Tonight, we have a presentation for you. The reason we have a presentation tonight, we have learned a lot in the past several months regarding to the resources that we need, the technology that we need to make transportation more efficient. And one area that we are just, if they consider, make a recommendation to Board of Education to change the problem software. But tonight, we have Representative Paul of Transfinder to present the information. Let's see, and his very question.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Dave Solicito. I'm obviously a representative for Transfinder. I manage fifteen states and all the international business for Transfinder currently, live here in New York, and an upstate resident, so look forward to presenting with you. Obviously know a little bit about the district and what they're trying to solve. And really, my presentation tonight was more about information and information on what is actually out there. Couple key stats that we see in the industry. You know, forty-two percent of parents say they have to put their job at risk for children's transportation, right? Twenty-four percent say child misses out on activities. Two out of every three say their kids disrupt work regularly, right? These are all common things that parents go through. My wife's a kindergarten teacher upstate, and we talk about the things that go on. Really, what Transfinder tries to do, and what I've told people in the twelve years that I've been there, is we try to assist with the flow of information. There's what the public thinks is happening. There's what the administration thinks is happening. There's what the folks in transportation thinks is happening. And then sometimes, there's what's really happening. And what Transfinder tries to do for school districts is connect all of that information to make sure that everybody that's involved, from the transportation staff, to the administration, to the parents, have the ability to see that data. And that data flows both ways. How we do that, right? Well, our software has advanced. This is all that we do is student transportation software for school districts across the country. So we talk about efficiency. We talk about having tools. We need to be able to route faster, more efficiently, with tools that enable the team, right? Insight, track the performance of your transportation operation with key metrics, KPIs. And then communication. So the ability to share accurate information is huge. But the only thing worse than sharing no information is sharing the wrong information. So that's what we're really trying to hone in on and make sure that we have the correct data. How do we do that? Well, it starts with the routing software. It starts with internal, within the district, the ability to have the best routing software out there that the team in transportation can utilize. We are the tool that comes to the district to be able to have access from anywhere, you know, quick find answers, have fleet and ridership tracking, you know, be able to see the stuff that goes on within there. From there, we talk about operational awareness. This is where we start talking about how we connect that information. So we've got the buses that are running. We've got the, the people that are planning the routes. Through the use of, of GPS and data that's on the buses, we're able to see real-time awareness. The reality of it is, in most school districts, obviously if you're transporting kids over the age of ten, actually, that might be a little outdated now, but kids have phones. Parents are tracking their phones. Most of the times, parents have more information on where their kids are than transportation does because they don't have the updated technology. I think about when I started at Transfinder, you know, having a flip phone versus now my iPhone fourteen when I get in the car. It connects. There's not a whole lot of steps that go on. We're trying to advance technology in this space to do that. When we talk about parent apps, and we talk about how parents get insight, you know, it really comes down to the school in how much information they want to share, how much communication they want back and forth. And we work very closely throughout this entire process with these districts to make sure that it's the smoothest rollout possible. Now, I understand, you know, things happen, and we need to make things happen fast. We always want to work through the process. We always want to work with the district to implement it as, as efficiently as possible, but also to roll it out right to the parents. The biggest thing that I've seen in the last twelve years is the idea of being proactive versus reactive. Schools in general are reactive. They're reactive to situations. They're reactive to things that go on. It's just human nature. What our software and what our tools allow you to do is to really start looking at it proactively. You guys have a team. You've got folks here that we partner with that are able to work with our tools to make sure that you can really start to be proactive with notifying folks and, and having the right information out there. When we talk about from then and now, right? We talk about the idea of what the folks are using now in transportation versus what's out there. You know, the, the ability to drive all the routes or go out and see all the things. People don't have time for that anymore. Things are happening so fast, so our tools will actually give you the ability to see things that people think they already have when really they don't. So we really need to up the technology in the, the department, and we can do that. We've got a lot of clients here in Long Island, and I always rely on our clients. Transfinder has over three thousand worldwide school districts that use us, from the Loudon County Virginias to the Prince George's County in Maryland, large schools, all the way down to my wife's school transports three hundred and fifty kids. So they utilize our software very differently, but I think about it much like Microsoft Excel in that I think I'm a pretty good user. Meet somebody like my boss with five spreadsheets linked together with formulas and pivot tables and realize, wow, I don't use it like that. You've got folks on staff that understand our tools and understand the technology, and will be able to use it that way. The biggest thing that I've found over the years is when we talk about the idea of rolling the, something like this out. Transfinder takes a very proactive approach to having a project manager, having a trainer dedicated to the district, that they'll get to know throughout the entire implementation and work side by side with to make sure that they can continue to grow with the software. We have an entire suite. I, I always like to tell folks that if you've got a need in student transportation, we've got a way to help you with it. That being said, not everybody needs everything, and you don't need everything right now. So we're working towards getting you the things that you need to solve the problems that we've uncovered, but knowing that you can grow with us in the future. And the key with all of that is unfortunately, as we look at this implementation, when skip, steps are skipped, you know, implementations are rushed, we want to make sure that we give the folks enough time to go through and learn each piece of the tool to ensure that the outcome is correct. Again, sharing the correct information with parents. I'm sure a few folks watch the news, you see the stuff that goes on out there with some of the competition. This is a very interesting market. It's a very emerging market. There are things out there that happen with the school districts that we can't let happen. So we want to partner with you guys to make sure that you don't end up in those positions. And really, I always leave this to last because when we talk about who am I standing up here telling you all this, when you folks know it, you live it, we've been doing it for thirty-five years. This is what we do. Help schools to be as efficient as possible with student transportation, routing, parent apps, tools, consistently developing it. And again, we're happy to support over three hundred schools in New York State alone with twenty-three hundred worldwide. And really, we, we look forward to the potential to work with you all.
Any comments from any board members? Presentation? No? Thank you very much.
Good. Good evening, and thank you, sir, for providing us with a very informative presentation. I appreciate that. Thank you, Dr. Rosay. So this evening, as your acting superintendent of schools, I would like to share a report. I am happy to share that Riverhead High School graduate Ethan Greenwich from Flanders has made a twenty-five hundred dollar donation to Phillips Avenue Elementary School for school supplies. Ethan is a football offensive tackle for the Atlantic Falcons of the National Football League. He is also a graduate of Villanova, where he played football. We are very proud of Ethan's success and for the donation he has made to Phillips Avenue Elementary School. I would like now to share with you a, an update regarding DEI. The Riverhead Central School District is committed to supporting all students, families, and stakeholders with respect, integrity, and sensitivity, as addressed in the district's DEI plan. It is through this plan, prepared by the Riverhead Central School District Diversity and Cross-Cultural Task Force, and adopted by the Board of Education in the spring of 2022, that we honor and respect the rich diversity within our district and provide necessary support for our students. Through the implementation of this plan, we have created a welcoming and affirming environment, cognizant of how our students learn, and have structured an academic environment that is academically rigorous and intellectually challenging. The end result of these actions is the empowerment of our students as agents of positive social change and the recognition of their important voice in all aspects of learning. This fall, we will be conducting a deep and comprehensive review of our current DEI plan. Spearheading this initiative will be Dr. Emily Sands, Director of SEL E&amp;L Special Programs and Community Outreach. She will be chairing a committee of stakeholders consisting of members of our district and representing, representatives from the Riverhead community. It will be important for the committee to use our current plan as a framework to assess how, as a just district, we have met or not met essential goals in this plan. We will also be looking to this committee to outline our priorities, needs for professional development, and reflection that will help ensure we meet desired DE, or DEI goals with fidelity and achieve outcomes that are positive, culturally sensitive, and meaningful for our students and district stakeholders. Dr. Sands and I invite and welcome members of the community to be part of this important work. I encourage everyone who would like to assist us in this effort to kindly send an email to Dr. Sands indicating your desire to be considered for this committee. It is our goal to share with the Board of Education and the community the committee's findings and necessary upgrades to our district DEI plan at a board meeting, Board of Education meeting in the spring of 2024. At this time, I'd like to transition and provide you with an update regarding transportation across the district. At the high school, buses, bus arrival and departures are solid. They're good. Middle school, arrival is great. Dismissal is staggered. First release on time, second release delayed seventeen minutes as buses come from Pulaski. Late buses are still remaining as an issue at times, running close to an hour late. At Akabog, bus arrivals and departures have been good. At Pulaski, things have improved with PM pickup, but we are still looking to make improvements. Incorporating two waves of loading students has offered both the middle school and Pulaski quickie, a quicker departure time. At Riley, Riley's getting closer and closer, closer to being on time. However, we have not had all students out by three forty-five PM, which is our dismissal time. Most of the buses are out by four PM. Some buses are arriving too early in the morning with, with some students sitting on the bus for at least twenty minutes. We are working with our transportation department to rectify this concern. At Roanoke, bu, buses are fine for arrival at Roanoke. Dismissal is okay. We are still getting two buses late after four PM every day. However, transportation is working diligently to correct those routes. And finally, at Phillips, arrival in the morning is good, and all departures in the afternoon are going well. So again, this is work in progress. We are working diligently with Mr. Letmore, our Director of Transportation. It is National Principal Month. In October, we celebrate the work, the dedication, compassion of our principals and assistant principals. We are privileged to have a strong, committed, transformative group of administrators to work with our students and serve as a valued stakeholder in the Riverhead Central School District learning community. It is through their efforts that our students strive in all aspects of learning. Thank you for all that you do. National Coaches Day began in nineteen seventy-two when President Richard M. Nixon signed a proclamation establishing October sixth as a day to celebrate those who serve as coaches in all sports. The Riverhead Central School District expresses gratitude to our coaches on National Coach Day, which took place on Friday, October the sixth. In addition to advancing the skills of our student athletes, coaches encourage them to grow as people and leaders, promoting the values of teamwork, determination, and confidence. Thank you, coaches, for helping our students to grow and become engaged with their passions and talents. Now I would like to share some highlights across the district by building. In Akabog Elementary School, Akabog students and staff turned the school blue for Dyslexia Awareness Month. Students learned about what dyslexia is and how to respect and value those who think and learn differently. Akabog students participated in their first teammate of the week assembly of the year. We celebrate students who were selected as the teammate of the week for September and introduce this month's character trait of the month, responsibility. October second, third, and for, in, I'm sorry, I apologize. In Akabog, grades second, third, and fourth graders are participating in the Let Grow Project, undertaking non-academic tasks to build a responsibility and life skills outside of school. Akabog students are preparing for the Third Annual Outdoor Learning Day. Students and staff will take their learning into the great outdoors to see things from a new perspective. Akabog students will be practicing fire safety next week through our annual visits from the fire department to coach students through the smokehouse. We are excited to host our E&amp;L Family Night for the first time here in the building. English learners and their families will participate together in games and activities, including family soccer, as well as learn important information about their child's journey as an English learner. At Riley Avenue Elementary School, our NTSS focus for the building is on reading. Teachers are closely examining practices with the goal of increasing student achievement. They are in the process of completing a reading inventory. Green Initiative, Riley is piloting composting. Students are involved in a gardening initiative in the Riley Courtyard with all grade levels. The school's student leadership team is leading this effort. Riley is partnering with Cornell Cooperative Extension to have discovery tanks in all classrooms, which provides students with hands-on science. With a focus on learning about our community, each class has adopted a Riverhead landmark that they are researching and sharing with students across grade levels. Riley Book Fair will take place during the week of October the sixteenth. There will be an evening book fair and pumpkin decorating on October the eighteenth. At Phillips Avenue Elementary School, on Friday, October the thirteenth, we are celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month at Phillips Avenue School through a school-wide event. Each classroom has chosen Hispanic country to learn about and create displays outside their classroom. On Friday, each class will have the opportunity to participate in a gallery walk around the building to learn about each country represented while celebrating Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month. On Thursday, October the nineteenth, our school resource officer from the Southampton Town Police Department, along with other members from South O'Town Police Department, are sponsoring an emergency services day at Phillips Avenue School from ten AM to two PM on our backfield. On the site will be police hel, helicopter, K-9 unit, plus other facets of the emergency services unit. It will be a great day of learning for Phillips Avenue School community. At Roanoke Avenue Elementary School, the Roanoke PTO had a great first fundraiser on Saturday, September sixteenth, as they hosted a community car wash in the Roanoke Bus Loop. We had several Roanoke families all pitch in and help wash cars in the morning. Students even had the chance to wash a big fire truck as our fire department neighbors brought one of their trucks over to get washed. It was an absolute thrill for our students who were helping out. School is off to a great start as students and classes are taking advantage of the nice weather to learn outside about shadows, change of leaf colors, autumn, and more. At Riverhead Middle School, the PBIS incentive card is up and running at Riverhead Middle School. Every Friday morning, students can cash in their waived dollars for prizes. The seventh grade advisory program continues to be a success at the middle school. Over the past two weeks, students have done community circles, learned about their learning styles, developed goals, and learned about the importance of self-advocacy. On September twenty-eighth, the middle school hosted their second annual pep rally on the Pulaski turf. Scholar athletes were recognized for their commitment outside of the classroom and on the athletic fields. The pep band played music, and the show choir sang the national anthem, along with the cheerleaders leading cheer throughout the pep rally. At Riverhead High School, Riverhead High School has been awarded financial support from Capital One and Virtual Enterprise International. As per Ellen Palazzo, Long Island Regional Director, the launch of the VE program at Riverhead High School this school year has been impressive, largely, largely due to your patient work over several years to build foundational experiences and business courses to prepare students for success in VE capstone experience. A virtual enterprise leadership conference will be held this year in October at LIU Post. On Friday, September twenty-second, students from Riverhead High School's History of Long Island class, which is a Stony Brook University elective, attended a field trip to historic North Fork locations. Students learned the stories of North Fork history. Students also boarded the sea jet courtesy of the Cross Sound Ferry, where they traveled to view eight different lighthouses and historically significant sites around the waters of Plum Gut, Gardner's Bay, Long Island Sound, New London Harbor, and Fisher's Island Sound. From the guidance department, ninth grade students and counselors, meetings have been concluded. Initial classroom college application process meetings conclude, have concluded October the fourth. We had a successful NCAA Financial Aid Night on September twenty-eighth, where essential information on the new FASPA form and timelines were addressed. We hosted a college information night on October the fifth with a guest speaker from the Siena College Admissions Office. We had a successful school college fair for students today in the high school gym with eighty colleges represented. We will be having an evening college fair for students and families on October the twenty-sixth from five PM to seven thirty in the high school gym. The digital PSAT will be administered on Saturday, October the fourteenth. We will continue with our series of college admission rep visits as they meet with students in the guidance office at the high school. Over fifty schools are scheduled to participate this fall. The Riverhead High School Evening Academy opened on September the eighteenth with twelve students. We now have twenty students enrolled, and we expect more students to be enrolled in the weeks to follow. At the middle school, counselors are finishing all seventh grade classroom presentations. At the elementary schools, counselors continue to present to all grades K through four and five, six students in their classrooms to support social, emotional learning, and more. I have an update from the STEM department. Dr. Maria Esposito, Associate Professor at the School of Education Human Resources at Malloy University, will be coming to Riverhead to present information to our teachers about their new program resulting in an advanced certificate in computer science education. Starting in September twenty-two thousand, teachers must hold a computer science certification in order to teach courses that fall under the computer science umbrella in New York State, or have applied for a statement of continued eligibility if they have taught a computer science course for at least one year from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-four. Articulation and alignment curriculum meetings in Humanities and STEM will continue this year in an effort to bridge together student learning outcomes between buildings and grade levels across the district. Teachers K through twelve were polled this school year to determine what we as a district need to do further to support K through twelve computer science digital fluency standards. Dr. Campbell alongside Jen Souter and certainly Mr. Hines presented presented all buildings K through 12 last year on the standards, and will continue this project throughout the school year in order to ensure that all students are leaving each grade band with necessary skills to fulfill the vision for the computer science and digital fluency standards, which include every student will know how to live productively and safely in technology, in a technology-dominated society. This includes understanding the essential features of digital technologies, why and how they work, and how to communicate and create using those technologies. As for the Office of Curriculum and District Office, new initiative for the 2023-2024 school year will be to craft the Essentials of Learning for grades K through 6. The Essentials of Learning is a document that provides students, teachers, families, and others with a summary of what students are expected to learn and understand upon the conclusion of a grade level in the four core areas of learning in grades K through 6. The document will be rooted in the New York State Learning Standards for each core discipline by grade, followed by the expectation through a teacher's lens of what is taught and the purpose of such, to prepare students for success as they progress from one grade of learning to the next. In addition, we are hoping to develop a tool that teachers can then use with parents and guardians during parent-teacher conferences and certainly during open house. We will be administering a district-wide rethink SEL baseline assessment in October, and a post-assessment in April. The data received from these assessments will be used by instructional leaders and administrators to further support students' social and emotional needs and development. A parent-guardian letter will be sent to families addressing the purpose and date of the assessment in the weeks to follow. Starting in 2024, the grades 5 and 8 ELA math and science tests are required to be administered by computer. This is the first step in the statewide implementation of computer-based testing, culminating with all New York State 3 through 8 exams being administered through computer-based assessing in 2026. In athletics, girls' soccer, Alexis Ray has scored 29 goals and is a leading goal scorer in Suffolk County and Long Island. Congratulations to Chris Jones, breaking the cross-country record. Girls' tennis, Christina Pagnozi has clinched a spot to compete in the individual Suffolk Girls County Tennis Championship. She is our second player ever to compete in the event. Many teams hosted breast cancer awareness events to raise money for this important cause. We welcome and appreciate our community for coming out and supporting our teams. For a most up-to-date schedule of home and away games, please see information on our website. All spectators are to be mindful to act appropriately, demonstrate use of appropriate language, and act responsibly and respectfully at all games. It is expected that all spectators that attend games are compliant to Section 11 Spectator Code of Conduct in conjunction with the New York State Public High School Athletic Association Policy of Spectator Expectations and Decor. So certainly, what you can see here, what you have heard, is a great representation of what is taking place across the district. What is taking place on a daily basis with our students. But those students are nurtured through the phenomenal facilitation and the work ethic of our teachers. So we applaud our teachers, we applaud our administrators, we applaud all of our staff members that make up Riverhead Central School District. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from other members of the board? I had just one question. At the beginning, you had mentioned anyone who is interested in getting involved in the DEI committee can contact Dr. Sands.
Dr. Sands.
What is her email address, just so that...
So what we will do, we're going to be posting something on our website, inviting our community members that are interested in being part of this important committee, you know, with that information.
Perfect.
Okay.
I would also like to add, our students will be involved in that as well.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm really looking forward to what we're going to build through that. So anyone in the community who is interested in being involved, I know some people have been reached out, have been reached out to, but anyone else who's involved, please make sure to keep an eye out on our website and also social media, our district Facebook page, and you can get updates about that. We're going to move on to public comment on agenda items. Now, this is just comments on items on the agenda, so anything under consent agenda or new business. Are there any comments from those in the audience today? Are there any online comments, Lisa? Seeing none, we're going to move on to consent agenda. Can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? Thank you very much, Mr. Connolly. Can I have a second? Thank you very much, Ms. Murphy. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Just whoever donated to the fishing club, because I noticed Garrett Moore is going to be, is a donation to run that fishing club, so thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor? And motion passes. Going to move on to Letter A, approval of district-wide safety plan for 2023-2024. Can I have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Can I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Healy. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? And motion passes. Letter B, approval of summer transportation contract for special education. Can I have a motion? Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Redmond. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? And motion passes. I'd like to make a motion to table letters C and D until our next meeting. Can I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Can I have a... Oh, so we need... Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? And motion passes. So we'll discuss C and D at our next meeting. Letter E, approval of renewal of contracts. Can I have a motion? This is approval of summer transportation contracts. Can I have a motion to accept?
Motion.
Thank you, Ms. Healy. Can I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion passes. Letter F, approval of memorandum of agreement with RCFA member. Can I have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Connolly. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Redmond. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? And motion passes. Letter G, approval of contracts. These are various municipal bids that we are piggybacking off of, municipal and other school bids. Can I have a motion to accept? Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? And motion passes. Letter H, approval of contract for ES Bosse Senior Network Engineer Service for the 2023-2024 school year. Can I have a motion to accept?
Motion.
Thank you, Ms. Healy. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Redmond. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? And motion passes. Letter I, approval of contract with Developmental Disabilities Institute, 2023-20, 2021-2023 ARP contract for school years. Can I have a motion to accept?
Motion.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Can I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Scudder. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? And motion passes. Letter J, to authorize the Board of Education President to sign contracts for PPS for the 2023-2024 school year. Can I have a motion to accept? Thank you, Mr. Scudder. Can I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? And motion passes. Letter K, appointment of special counsel. These are for two different special counsels in connection with investigations against district employees discussed in executive session. Can I have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Redmond. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? And motion passes. Letter L, to authorize the use of Omnia contracts 1911 copiers and printers. Can I have a motion to accept?
Motion.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Can I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Connolly. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? And motion passes. Letter M is actually, I was informed by the district clerk, a repeat of a previous letter. The approval of special education service contracts was just approved in a previous letter. So we're just going to skip over that. Letter N, amendment to appointment of impartial hearing officers. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Ms. Healy. Can I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Scudder. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? And motion passes. Letter O, approval of EBALR. Can I have a motion to accept? Thank you, Mr. Connolly. Can I have a second?
Second.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Murphy. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? And motion passes. Letter P is approval of field trips. We have the NJROTC participating in basic leadership training at the Boy Scout Camp in Bating Hollow over the past weekend, and high school music students performing at a festival of music in Virginia Beach, March 22nd to 24th of next year, at a cost to the district not to exceed $875. Can I have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Redmond. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? And motion passes. Letter Q, approval to discard of surplus equipment. A lot of equipment from various buildings throughout the district that need to be discarded. Can I have a motion to accept?
Motion.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Can I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Scudder. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? And motion passes. Letter R, acceptance of donations. We have $800 from Slow Food East End to be used for the new agricultural science class at the high school. We have a supply of sweatpants for our schools as part of the Sweatpants Initiative from Always Compassionate. And as mentioned before, we have $2,500 from Ethan Greenwich to the Phillips Avenue Elementary School to be used for school supplies. Can I have a motion to accept?
Motion.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Can I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Scudder. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
All in favor? And motion passes. I'd like to make a motion to add letter S to the agenda, which is a resolution that would be read as followed. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the acting superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby authorizes an additional premium expense of $2,002 to be paid to the New York School Insurance Reciprocal to provide additional general liability coverages for district-based parent-teacher organizations and booster clubs utilizing district property. And authorizes the Board President to execute any necessary documents to facilitate the same. So because we have so many PTOs who have to have their own insurance, it actually makes more financial sense for them all to be included on our district insurance plan, so that that way they don't have to raise funds just for that. Can I have a motion to add that to the agenda?
Motion.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Can I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Scudder. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
No, but I'm glad that we're doing this because, you know, I ran a PTA and you had to get insurance, but the PTO and the boosters, it's a lot more money. Come on $4, $5, $600, and so, you know, we had asked to look into this and that it was affordable. I'm happy for the PTOs and the booster clubs.
I'd also like to express our gratitude to the parents and community members who support our students through their fundraising efforts, who really enhance student programming in Riverhead Central School District as a result of their fundraising, bringing programs into our schools. We're very grateful and happy to do this for our parent organizations.
Absolutely. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? And motion passes. So now we have letter S, which is to add that additional premium of $2,002 to our insurance reciprocal premium. Can I have a motion to accept?
Motion.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Can I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Scudder. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? And motion passes. Now we're going to move on to opportunity for board members. Do we have any board committee reports?
We do. On September 13th, 2023, we had the Health and Safety Committee meeting held at the Riverhead Middle School Library. Attendees included Board of Education trustee Erica Murphy, myself, Dr. Augustine E. Toratori, Superintendent of Schools, Laura Arcuri, Assistant Principal, Roanoke Elementary School and Pulaski Street School, Patrick Burke, Principal, Pulaski Street School, Terry Colhane, Director of Safety and Security, Frank Jarrow, Riverhead Fire District, Melissa DeRosa, Director of People Personnel Services, Arlene Zrakowski, Director of Personnel, Al Galena, Director of Facilities, Emmanuel Hernandez, Assistant Principal, Riverhead Middle School, Lorelei Honig, our student ambassador from the high school, Dr. Steve Hudson, Principal, Phillips Avenue, Sonia Johnson, Guard at Roanoke Elementary School, NSEA President, John Lauchester, Assistant Principal, Riverhead High School, Gary Carlson, Assistant Principal, Aquabog Elementary School, Beth Menes, Teacher, Riley Avenue, Garrett Moore, Teacher, Riverhead High School, Leslie Moore, Senior Director of Transportation, Eric Motley, Assistant Director of Transportation, Kristen Ninni, Eastern Suffolk Bosse's, Lieutenant Susan Ralph, Southampton Town Police, Lieutenant Danielle Wellesley, Riverhead Police Department. We welcomed Lorelei Honig as our student ambassador and thanked her for joining the Health and Safety Committee. From the Facilities Department, renovation and construction projects, Riley, Pulaski, and the high school are in progress and will be completed late October to early November. Kristen and Ninni from, I hope I'm portraying that name, from Eastern Suffolk Bosse's provide a pamphlet on unit ventilators, which will be distributed to staff, automated external defibrillators, AEDs. New AEDs and AED cabinets were installed in Riley, Aquabog, Phillips, Roanoke, and Pulaski buildings, as well as the district office. Any interior area in all of our school buildings are now within a minute or less of walking distance to an AED. From Security Department, the renovation plan is in place with Suffolk Community College. Mr. Terry Colhane stated that all buildings should take tours so that they are prepared if an emergency situation should arise. All buildings should have a safety bag containing a current student roster. The recommendation is to download the roster onto a flash drive and tape it to the laptop in the emergency bag. The buildings should also conduct drills and have a command post set up until the police arrive. These drills should be conducted in addition to the regularly scheduled fire drills. Aquabog has two teams set up. Mr. Colhane has met with them to review building-level safety plans. Mr. Colhane would like to meet with each building to review their specific safety plans. In the event of an emergency, transportation may not be available to transport students and staff. Therefore, each building needs to have a shelter area. Mr. Colhane is working on finding alternative sites in the event evacuation is necessary. The scholarship kiosks have been deployed at the high school and middle school. Students are required to tap in when arriving to school each day. ID cards are delayed due to technology issues. Kiosks are limited in their use as the batteries only last for 30 to 40 minutes per charge. They are also utilized to ensure only students with assigned lunch periods enter the cafeteria. And at the high school, only those permitted to leave campus for lunch. Mr. Colhane recommends administrators to think of events out of the ordinary that may occur and develop appropriate action plans. The staff in the building should be familiar with the school safety plans. The security capital project is almost complete. Blue strobe lights have been installed on the interior and exterior of all buildings and will activate in emergency situations to alert people to avoid approaching the buildings, as well as alert those within to seek a safe area. Activation of the Rave app will trigger the lights and seize control of the smartboards in every classroom to alert everyone of the emergencies. Additionally, door sensors have been installed on every exterior school building in the district to alert when a door is opened unauthorized. Unfortunately, the district is short-staffed with guards, which hurts the deployment of guards. The need for guards exceeds what we have available. The change in the elementary bell schedule has changed the guards' hours. Therefore, several guards are no longer available to assist with after-school activities. Also, the additional programs require security staffing. Mr. Colhane stated that the guards are not responsible for directing... staffing. Mr. Colhane stated that the guards are not responsible for directing traffic. That is a Riverhead Police Department responsibility. Mr. Colhane clarified the responsibility of the door monitors as well. Their job is to monitor who enters the buildings. They are not there for clerical support and should not be giving clerical tasks. Mr. Colhane requested description of the responsibilities of the athletic coaches and the responsibility for supervision of students at the end of practice until students leave property. There was an issue with the printing of student ID cards. The two software programs did not sync accurately. The names and pictures on the student ID cards did not match. Student info's need to be retaken in order to create new student ID cards. However, Mr. Colhane was in the process of rectifying that situation.
Employees have been notified to reach out to Mr. Colhane to obtain new ID cards. The new employee ID cards are being used to assess the building in place of a key. Exterior building keys and old ID cards should be returned to security. When the Rave app is activated for the building lockdown, ID drills will be deactivated. Employees will have access to the building an hour before and after their scheduled work areas. If anyone needs access after hours, call Mr. Colhane. The ID cards for the substitute employees and outside agencies will not have the building access strip. In the event of an emergency, Riverhead Police Department has key fobs for every building. Lorelei brought up an issue that students don't like to wear their IDs, and students sometimes lose their IDs. Mr. Colhane explained that student IDs should be visible for security, and the purpose is strictly for security reasons. It identifies if a student belongs in the building. If a student have their IDs visible, it will help lessen the congestion in cafeteria entrances. IDs can be easily replaced. If a student needs a new ID, they can go to Ms. Mongelio's office. Transportation Department. The Transportation Department utilizes the Transversus system for routing. Due to the growth of the district and many factors that affect transportation, the department would be more efficient if it changed to the Transfinder rounding system. The Transfinder rounding system has the ability to locate students when they are on school buses. The cost of the Transfinder routing system can be covered by a grant because it applies directly to students. It is a cloud-based system with many benefits, such as providing oral directions to substitute drivers and bus drivers covering runs they are not familiar with. New York State has zero emissions mandate, which will require the use of electric buses. The department will need more buses, which will increase the need for more drivers. The bus drivers completed interior bus drills. They discussed crossing the street in front of the bus to the students. They did not conduct the crossing street drills at the time because of the issues that the buses running late. An actual crossing exercise will take place later this month. Additional items of concern. Mr. Garrett Moore brought up several concerns that he has received from colleagues. He asked how to report issues concerning mold. Mr. Galena requested that they reach out to the chief or head custodian first. If an employee has an ongoing concern, then reach out to Mr. Galena. There is overgrown bushes in front of emergency windows. Mr. Galena said he would look into it. There is concern about a person living in the woods near the school building. This matter should be reported to the Riverhead Police Department. There were several concerns regarding a classroom at Pulaski. Mr. Galena was familiar with the situation. All concerns have been addressed. Air conditioning is a concern in several buildings. Mr. Galena is working with architects to install more air conditioners. Unfortunately, Pulaski and Roanoke don't have the grid to support more air conditioning. Mr. Galena is trying to resolve the problem. Our next meeting will be November fifteenth at the Middle School Library.
Thank you. And any other committee reports?
The Wellness Committee met, met. Met, excuse me. Tuesday, September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, in the district office. Attendance were Dr. Augustine Toratori, Dr. Lori Kerner, Keith Graham, Brian Sacks, myself, Colin Palmer, Dan Hall, Daria Hagemeier, and in absent were Melissa DeRosa and Virginia Healy. A report from Food Services. Keith Graham let us know that the community eligibility, C E P, all students are eligible for breakfast and lunch at no charge. New York State will cover a cost of reimbursement. We are reimbursed for eighty-seven percent of breakfast and lunch at free rate and thirteen percent at paid rate. The paid percentage will be reimbursed at the higher rate this year. The reimbursements go to the cafeteria capital reserve. Ideas for use of this money is to potentially expand the size of the kitchens at Phillips and Riley. We have received an equipment grant from New York State in the amount of eighty thousand dollars. We plan to purchase new ovens and refrigerators at three schools. We are piling a composting program at Riley. We are beginning by composting fruits, vegetables, and bread products. We plan to eventually move this to our cafeterias. Special Education, P P S, Daria Hagemeier and Dan Hall report that there is a national shortage of EpiPens. We usually receive free EpiPens through the organization EpiPens for classrooms. They were ordered in May but never arrived. Many students have been stunned by yellow jackets, even though the buildings are doing their best to ensure safety. We have been able to secure generic brand EpiPens at a lower cost, two hundred and fifty dollars per double pack as compared to nine hundred dollars per double pack, and have ordered enough for all buildings. Dr. Emily Sands reported on S E L. We continue our partnership with Rethink Ed again this year for S E L lessons, ideas, and resources. S E L is intertwined within the curriculum. Our dual-language classes across the elementary schools are using the American Reading Company Curriculum, A R C. It is important for all students to feel a sense of belonging so that they may reach their highest academic potential. Brian Sacks, the athletic director, reported that we are in the process of converting health classes from eleventh grade to tenth grade at Riverhead High School. This will eventually open up elective opportunities for students. Health is incorporated in the elementary schools through our physical education classes twice monthly. Think Wellness New York currently provides yoga and mindfulness instruction for our students K through eight. We are working on a plan for incorporating this through our physical education classes in the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five school year and beyond. Restorative Practices, Dr. Kerner. This is the third year of our restorative practice training. In the district, we have offered extensive training for over one hundred employees, and this year was the first year of our Train the Trainer program. Thanks to Georgia Keller and Nicole Giganti for presenting three sessions, our superintendent's conference day to our security guards, transportation employees, cafeteria staff, teaching assistants, monitors, and aides. This is a step in the right direction for ensuring that all members of the R C S D are involved in and deeply understand restorative practices and a common language used with our students.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Are there any general board comments? Seeing none. We're going to move on to opportunity for R C F A.
Good evening. Gregory Wallace, Riverhead Central Faculty Association. The R C F A is pleased to announce that after a three-year hiatus, the Harlem Wizards will return to Riverhead High School Gymnasium on Thursday, November ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, where they will once again take the court against the Riverhead teachers. Starting in two thousand and thirteen, the Riverhead Central Faculty Association has hosted the Harlem Wizards to benefit the Riverhead Central Faculty Association Scholarship Fund. This event has raised nearly eighty-five thousand dollars, all of which has been awarded directly to Riverhead students. Since two thousand and nineteen alone, when the Wizards were last here, the Riverhead Central Faculty Association has awarded twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars in the form of forty-four scholarships to deserving seniors. In additions to scholarships, ten thousand dollars from the proceeds of this event was used to purchase Chromebooks for our students at the onset of COVID. We would like to thank our sponsors of this event. Our media sponsor is Riverhead Local. Our slam dunk sponsors are administrative services only. Bernadette Tuttle Esquire Partner, Tumi Latham and Shay. Empire Wellness. Our three-point sponsors are Stacy Burn Associates, Georgie's of Bating Hollow, and B S N Sports. Our rebound sponsors are the Riverhead Administrators Association, Riverhead Building Supply, Mirkin and Gordon, Peconic Monuments, Riverhead Toyota, and our booster is Gibbiser and Gibbiser CPAs. Tickets sales are now open at harlemwizards.com. We hope you support our event, as every dollar raised here goes to students of Riverhead. Thank you.
Thank you. We have an opportunity for R A A. Do we have a raw comment?
Yeah.
Tonight? We're going to move on to opportunity for public comment. Before we open that up, I'd just like to remind, just because we have a large group tonight, just remind you of the policy for public comment. Anyone is free to come up to speak at the podium. You have three minutes. We're going to hold that very strictly tonight, just to make sure that everyone has enough time to be able to speak. Please start by just saying your name and where you reside, and also please make sure that any comments that you make are directed to the board, not to the audience, and as a reminder that we can't entertain any comments about personnel, about specific personnel. So does anyone have any comments? Mr. Street?
Good night. My name is Larry Street, President of Eastern Long Island N W A C P. Mr. Gaulty? You called me today. How you doing? Pleased to meet you.
You as well.
You know, your old saying, a day late, a dollar short. I'll tell you what I mean by that. I've got three points I want to talk about. Questions, accountability, and transparency. Okay? I spoke about D E I, and it's very personal to me, because first of all, I'm President of the N W A C P and about social justice and the things that happen to those kids. And secondly, I take it personal because I was on the task force committee that put the plan together for the district. So it's very personal for me as well. Now, my question, because I said questions, why did it take an incident like this for now to reinvent the wheel about D E I? When it was in place, we had a cross-cultural committee made up of black, white, purple, green, you name it, and it was great. We got things done. Why now? Is it being relived? Did you drop the ball on it? Because we're in our, what, second year, and those things that happened could have been avoided. Now, the D E I plan is very broad. It handled racial incidents. It handles swastikas. It handles hate crimes. It handles everything. Our plan, and if you had to follow the plan, let me read this to you if you don't know. It says, "Recognize how prejudice and explicit, implicit bias manifest in our school, community by uncovering underlying problems and developing strategies to address them." Now, if you had to follow the plan, this could may have never happened. One of the things is twenty-six mini-films for exploring race bias identity with students. These were some of the things we had in place for the, and I, and I know this is superintendent, but I can't help but think that the district, that your board members, did not know that this was not working because a Thrive for Success Plan came up, okay, and everybody sort of forgot about the D E I plan. And I'm going to read one more. I'm going to go down to one more of those, the resources, is restorative practices. And we have that, I see you have that in your Thrive Plan also, and you say, what did you say? You say, implementation of restorative practices. Well, D E I covers that too. Okay. Now, I was at the car wash maybe a couple of weeks ago, and this-
Mr. Street, your time is up.
Excuse me. I'm taking his time and her time.
Well-
Thank you. And the parent said, the parent said, "Why is my student that was suspended for a week and been out of school for two weeks?" Then he said his other little son was in the bathroom watching a fight, and they suspended him for watching a fight. Where are your restorative practices? I'm going to collect data, okay, on every incident, every incident, every infraction, what it was about, okay, how long they were suspended, and the color of them, and who was the teacher? Because this all falls under D E I that you guys did not implement and put in place, not until something like this happens, and now you're going to reinvent it, "We got a D E I plan." I like your statement, Mr. Gaulty. Okay.
Gallotti.
But Gallotti, but it's like, we're sorry, but you know what? We can't take we're sorry anymore. We've been taking we're sorry for the longest. There's no transparency. We don't know what's going on, okay? These people pay school taxes. They have a right to least know what's going on. You guys are not transparent. There is so much here, okay, that we don't know about. You have all these special meetings, okay? That's not being transparent, and especially the taxpayers that pay school taxes out here. They deserve to know, okay? And again, I think you guys dropped the ball. And like I said, I'm going to gather data because I'm still fact-finding. I'm still fact-finding, and I can't really comment on what my next move is going to be until I get all the facts, until I get all the facts.
If I can comment, Mr. Street, I share your frustration with this.
Thank you. Thank you.
One thing that I wasn't really aware of specifically was the fact that the previous group that you were a part of, the D E I and cross-cultural task force-
Yes.
-was just a task force. So the way it was set up was-
What do you mean just a task force?
So it had a specific end. It had making up that framework. That was why it was put into existence. So it was kind of not doomed from the start-
Well, let me ask you a question.
But it served that function.
Let me ask you a question. Well, then who was responsible for carrying out the plan?
Well, that is the district, which is why I share your frustration, which I think is why having a permanent committee to be able to keep that in focus.
I'm sorry, that's not enough. That's not enough, okay? Because if that was the case, you would have made updates to this plan. Who made the updates to the plan if you say that there was that committee in place?
Well, this is the time for us to be able to-
The time, again, a day late, a dollar short. This should have been done a long time ago. A day late, a dollar short. And sometimes a day late, a dollar short doesn't cut it, and especially for the parents of those kids, you know?
Yeah, Dr. Gallotti, do you like that comment? Yeah.
Mr. Street?
Yes?
I would like to share some evidence, okay, in support of the work that we've done with the plan. We've partnered with the Anti-Bias Task Force in all our schools. We do have restorative practice that has been implemented, and professional development has been provided to our teachers. We offer a Great Kindness Challenge in grades K through four, National Bullying Prevention Month activities. That includes unity debt, Character Trait of the Month with an emphasis on citizenship and kindness, PTO-sponsored assemblies that involve acceptance, anti-bullying, and making good choices. And we have Rethink Ed implemented across the district to support our students in S E L. Ongoing professional development related to supporting and challenging English language learners and neurodiverse students. We have targeted recruitment of bilingual staff, investment in tailored curriculum. At the high school, we have elective-based courses, the Black Experience in America, the Latin American Experience, Literature of Genocide, A P for All. In clubs and activities, student-initiated, Healthy University, Hispanic Leadership, Women's Empowerment. Additional programs, CAP, Parent University, Career Fairs, Black History Unity Celebration, Hispanic Heritage Celebration, and this year, that is taking place on October the seventeenth.
Ms. Gallotti?
Okay, Mr. Street, these are just simply some examples. Does more work need to be done? Certainly. And that is the conversation that we had this afternoon. And I invite you, who has a history, okay, within this district, to help us shepherd this good message. Thank you.
You make me feel like a token, okay, besides myself, okay? I mean, you know, there's me, there's Tia Fulford, there's Mr. Brown, there's a whole lot of people in the community. Why just me? I feel like I don't want to be that person. I feel like I'm a, I don't want to be that person, okay? There's a whole lot of us that can be together and do this. You understand when you said, "Well, we want you," I felt like a token then, okay? I'm not a token black man. Not at all, okay? And if you want people, okay, you can call them up just like you called me up, okay? And ask them to be on it. But again, you're reinventing that wheel. We had a cross-cultural committee. Now you got to start all over. You have to start all over. Who's taking the blame for that? Can you answer me that question? I told you I had questions. Can you answer me that question? Who should take the blame? Obviously, they always say consent, silence is consent, okay? I don't know because nobody's saying nothing to me. But I want to know. And believe me, I will follow once I get the facts about this district. And wherever it leads me, that's where I'm going. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Street. Any other comments?
Good evening. My name is Tia Wana Fulford. I'm the founding director of the Butterfly Effect Project. Because of the time, I wouldn't just dive right in. Excuse me if I'm jumping around, but I have a lot of points to make. So I may be counting on you guys to let me borrow a few minutes. The first thing I want to talk about is being proactive versus reactive. We are here today because the district is very reactive. We are sitting here acting like this is the first time that we have heard a conversation about race come across this table. Meanwhile, every single person in front of me looks nothing like the district at all. We have a DEI plan that's not even a DEI plan and the district is saying that you guys are doing the work, but obviously you are not. Evidence one is the fact that we had constantly here, we had to bring their own information in so they can have a translator because the district did not provide a translator for them. Meanwhile, 67% of our children that come to the school is Hispanic. Unless any one of you guys are going to bust out and speak Spanish for me. I'm trying to figure out why there was not information on the screen in English and Spanish and why there's not someone here to promote and to advocate for the Spanish people. You sit here. Meanwhile, there's funding that the district is getting because these people are here. These family members are here. We love their children but not enough to give their parents the information to understand what's happening at a meeting where their child goes to. That is very reactive because now the next, I'm assuming you guys will have that in place. The next thing is the DEI framework that we're all talking about. I myself sat on that committee and I can honestly tell you, I don't know what happened. So I'm happy as some people do because I don't. I had emails that went unanswered when I wanted to figure out what was happening with it. And next thing I know, there is DEI framework. How? My voice was not even a part of the conversation. How can someone that needs somebody that looks like me help and leave my voice off the conversation? How can you tell me about me? And why are the conversations about electives elective anyway? If I have to learn about American history, why is my history not just as important? And let's just be real that the elective course that you just now referenced did not come about because of DEI. Let me give you history. It came about because a young girl, Azariah Allen, was upset that there was not African history in the high school. And the Butterfly Effect Project, along with Christine Tony, decided, "Let's do something about it." We advocated and fought. Myself, the NAACP, Mariner Winters Banks, we all fought for that course. And then when the course came in, guess who was the official teacher? A white person. And then we had to come back and fight again to get a black person for that. That is not DEI. That's just reminding us that you are putting bandages on the valve valves and asking us to go have a sit-down, go have a seat. And then let's talk about the fact that it happened with not just Mr. Bubby, Brown's grandchildren. Not just that, but the amount of fights that are happening in our school districts, day in and day out, and the suspension rates. And when I had a conversation with the superintendent, one of the things that I was reminded of, pause. Can I borrow a minute from somebody? Anybody in mind?
Thank you, babe. Just want to check.
Don't worry about the time.
Okay, great, thank you, appreciate that, bro. Well, it is an issue that I had when I spoke with him. He said to me, "Well, we can't punish all the kids the same because we have to take an accountability of their backgrounds." So you're taking an accountability of your backgrounds, understanding that systematically, the backgrounds and accountability is why we're in this place and beginning with. So if little Johnny never got in trouble for using the N-word and he gets caught this time, he's not going to get suspended. But if Shaniqua over there gets caught saying the curse word, she's out of here for 10 weeks. How is that even fair and acceptable? And for me, a black woman, to hear anybody tell me that and smile and have to, and I have to be in position to say, "I understand." And he's absolutely correct. I understand that the system is broken and it needs to be fixed from the inside out. You cannot continue to come to the community and say, "I'm sorry." And my brother, I tell people that I don't accept apologies because that's nothing more than adults telling me how they hurt my feelings and they're upset that I'm upset, that they're upset. No, I need you to do your job because the future is counting on you. DEI work is nothing but DEI work and let's be honest, it's a big fat grant that comes to anybody that uses that really sexy savage name, DEI. But to us, it's the Bible that creates a pathway for us to move forward as a community and a district. Vivien's little schools have been on the news more times than I can imagine and nothing positive. You have young girls who are afraid to come to school so they bring, they have to bring actual pepper spray to protect themselves. This problem did not start in the high school. Unfortunately, this problem actually started in Pulaski小学. When I noticed that these particular girls are bringing bullying and me going to where I went to to say, "Hey, this is an issue," fell on deaf ears. And then we bring in black people or black programs and we don't offer them the same assets or respects that you give the white people or white programs. And I'm not saying that you guys are doing this because you are racist. I would never say that. But I am saying that it needs to be something that you guys go in that back exec's room and really think about. What message are you saying? What message am I saying to my child when she comes to school and she's telling me that she's being taunted by someone? Do I trust the system that's going to fail her? And I know it will fail her because it failed so many? Or do I tell her to protect herself and then I deal with the school later? How many principals can actually sit here and say that they're not dealing with frustrated parents or parents that when their children are fighting, they're like, "I told her to do it." Look at your cameras, I have, and I have seen too many fights and gave heads of principals too many opportunities to fix it. When the fights, I witnessed a young girl disappear, go into the bathroom, come back, pull her backpack down. And I asked, "I wonder what happened in that bathroom?" I can tell you how that bathroom went. She went in and told her mom, "It's about to go down, Mom. This person's bothering me and no one's doing something." And her mom said, "Do what you have to do." I am employing you guys to do what you need to do. Don't just create DEI work because it sounds good. Do the work yourself. Has any of you as a board member did any type of training? I know that it was talked about as a black person in the community, as a black person that have children that come to the school district. I had said, "That's so important to make sure we have our biases checked at the front door." Every person, self-included, have biases. And if we are not checking them, then how are we out here helping anyone who our biases may be unintentionally impacting? I am still trying to figure out and get my hands around how we don't even have anything in this school district that says, "What happens when there's a hate crime?" And from my understanding, you don't even know what a hate crime is. Because that was a hate crime. The same way we paused for Israel, the same way we paused for Ukraine, we should pause for any minority in this community because we are under attack as well. The difference is, how silly are we? Not only are we under attack, we're helping our attackers because we believe in you. We want you to do right by us. We want to be a part of this community. We want to trust you. How can we trust something that is not only just broken, but you don't even understand that you're the one that's constantly breaking it? First, it was broken with the conversations that was had about a group of Latinas. And the answer was to get rid of the person off the board. I remember coming to that meeting and speaking and I remember someone giving me a high five and saying, "I'm happy she's gone." I wasn't happy she was gone. If I have to be honest, she was an incredible cat, big mouth, but she was good at her job. She just misspoke. And her misspoke and she would have came with teachings and lessons and education behind it, not just kicked it to the curb. Because now what we have is constantly, constantly apologies. Apologizing to a grandfather and four or five-year-old young kids that an 18-year-old adult, adult, because I remember you guys were doing 16-year-olds, not you guys specifically, but just the kid that we live in, in jail serving real-time, was able to call this person or anger and push them. And when we came to the school and again, this is a conversation I had, I questioned, "What is the outcome?" I understand that as a district, you cannot tell me the children names who did it. I understand you cannot tell me their punishments. But you are not even telling us if there was a punishment or we were told, "We handled it." But then it was implied, but just understand, Ms. Fulford, that we cannot, you know, punish them because, you know, it's based on their history. Who comes out of the closet like, "I just want you guys to know I'm a racist and let me know if that's a troublemaker?" Who does that? I believe that it needs to be a living document created bigger than your DEI work. I believe that each school should sit down as an assembly and let the children decide what is offensive to them. How can they move better? And then what is the consequences? And the consequences have to be united across the front. It doesn't matter if this is your first time or this is your 15th time. If you use a word or you do something that's offensive to someone, these are the actions. So when you have the conversation with the parent, you can say, "This is what took place, this is the consequence." And it needs to be on your website. Each school district, I'm sorry, building, it should be different because each school makeup is different. So what is offensive in high school may not even be offensive in kindergarten or Phillips Avenue School. But I believe that it's important that as a community, we figure out really quick what that looks like. Because what we keep doing is getting passes. And I have to be honest with you, the person that we're giving the pass to that's just occasionally dropping the N-word and pushing kids, maybe the same person that's doing a hate crime that they were like, "Oh, my God." We are supposed to be producing incredible young people here. I'm a blue wave until the day I die. But this right here is an embarrassment, not just to the school, but to the community. And it should be to each and every single one of you. Because each and one of you is campaigning saying how good and how great you are going to do and be a part of the community. Not just a community that you get to sit at home in the conference of your house. It should be all of us. We should all be included. And if you cannot do that, please help us find someone who can. Or I'm asking the district to stop being so close-minded and allow other people to come sit at that table. Because one of the issues are, a lot of us don't get an opportunity to sit at your table. And if you do not invite us, we will start to create our own. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fulford. Any other comments?
I feel like the people in our community who have been hurt the most are the people in our community who are the most forgiving. And it breaks my heart. My name's Kimberly Wilder. I live on Osborne Avenue and I coordinate Riverhead Area School Info Razzie, which was designed to kind of heal injustice in our community and desegregate the early elementary schools and to make things a lot better. What I would like to say is, white privilege and racism appear in many different ways. It is appalling that Riverhead students and a recent Riverhead grad acted in meanness and violence in an act of hate, bias and discrimination. Though it is also unkind and an expression of privilege that when a school board member said disparaging words about Latinos in March, our school leaders did not admit that that one person's mistake reflected a lot of community biases and a lot of people's feelings. It is privileged that after that incident in March, no one remembered and no one noticed about the DEI task force that had been dissolved. And I want to say as a white person, I guess, that it's like, people who are Spanish-speaking, the black and brown people are not treated well in our community, but people that are Spanish-speaking have this extra burden on them that they can't even understand and communicate because you're not having the meeting translated into Spanish. People that are Spanish-speaking, we have 60% Latinos, we don't, they're not connected in. They're having trouble getting represented on the school board. But they didn't even get as big attention in the press and they didn't even get the DEI task force revived because they have that extra burden on them. We have to be kind to all of the people and the groups in our community that need the most help. That's what leaders are supposed to do. Leaders are supposed to help people and they're supposed to help the people that are the most in need. White privilege and racism can be very subtle. It can be a frugal streak and a conservative streak that causes school leaders and school board members to gloat about how low our per pupil spending is and to placate the public with low budgets and words about respecting taxpayers, taxpayers and working people. And it was funny enough, as I say, somebody here that's a person of color said taxpayer. But I don't know, but I think the white people know that when we say taxpayer, that's usually the word that means people that own houses and people that are rich and people that aren't immigrants and people that don't rent. So I want us to be kind to everybody in our district, not just the working people, not just the taxpayers. Every school board member and every school leader should worry day and night about the overcrowding in our schools. Overcrowding creates social discord. We know that. You heard the word crowd control. You know you go to a sports event and if there's too many people, there's probably going to be violence. Overcrowding in schools that are too big lead to students labeling other people, having to find little cliques, having to find their identity by putting themselves together. Overcrowding in too-big schools, that lends itself to cliques and discrimination. We all deserve enough personal space. We all deserve human-scale, smaller communities where we can know the people in our schools and our classes. Then we're less likely to look at somebody and say, "That person's black, that person's Hispanic, that person's this, that person's that." These children deserve to have real, small, intimate communities where they make up the rules together and they know each other. That, the board should be trying to get the public to understand that we need a building fund, that we need a new building, that we need more space. You're not supposed to say, "It's not going to pass, I'm worried it didn't pass." You're supposed to say, "How am I going to get the moral courage to give other people the moral courage and a sense of ethics and caring to get the budget passed?" We should have, we should... Yes, there's a lot, there's a lot of money in this world and money is a very...
Please, no cross-talk, folks, please.
Thanks. Money is a very fungible thing. And as I do respect the fact that the board sometimes works on getting the idea not to let rich people and corporations get away with taxes, that is a very noble effort that's been made. But I think we also need to get everybody to understand that we can't sit around fighting for money. We need to think of the vision of what children need. The vision of what children need is more important than the vision of how the economy works or what the money is. We need our school to run board elections in a deliberate way to invite participation in all communities. For example, instead of just having, the last time when people ran for school board, they got a three-minute speech at the end of a really long meeting. It used to be that the school board would encourage local groups or actually, I think maybe do, meet the candidate in each of the four corners of our district. We have four elementary schools. That's four different areas and we all know there are four different cultures, four different groups, and in a lot of ways, four different socioeconomic groups. We need to get the board to reach out to all those people and let information and meetings and concern go to all those groups and listen to all those groups. We need, as somebody else said, we need to have these meetings to be translated into Spanish. If there's 60% Latino students, you need to have the meeting in Spanish. People need to make up their own rules. That's freedom, that's America, that's democracy. The three hate incidents, and I thank so much Tia, she's such a good speaker, that she just thrills me and warms my heart and makes me feel for hope in the world. There were three hate incidents. In March, there was a hate incident against Latinos. It wasn't, maybe, I don't know if you have to call it a crime or what it was, but it was hate. Somebody said disparaging words. I did not feel like after it that the district had a fabulous response. I didn't feel like things changed a lot. I feel like they had one great meeting and they made somebody resign and then they just kept walking. And if we would have solved things then and revived the DEI task force, maybe things would have been better. I think that's all I can say tonight and I thank everybody for listening. And I hope that this time the Anti-Bias Task Force multi, oh, no, this was my last note. The town Anti-Bias Task Force is not necessarily the best place to resolve these things. It's kind of like a game to just reach out to them and touch them. It sounds good, but we need our own one for children. Also, a lot of you know that the town Anti-Bias Task Force is such a political thing. It's going to be dependent on the party in power. And they just did a big coup and it's very Republican. I don't know, I don't want to say Democrat, Republican, I'm neither one. I don't respect either one all the way. But I don't think that the Republican Anti-Bias Task Force is going to be the way that's going to save our school and make us more loving and compassionate and see black and brown people better. But I hope we can all do better. I hope we can reflect. I try to reflect on my own bias and I hope we can make our school district better for everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Wilder. Any other comments? Mr. Brown?
Bob Brown, Riverside. I think everything that I wanted to say pretty much has already been said in a probably more eloquent way than I could have said it. But one of the things that is concerning to me that hasn't been, you probably are unaware of, since 2007, I had gone to the four principals of the elementary schools and with the... of, since 2007, I had gone to the four principals of the elementary schools and with the superintendent of schools, I think it was Nancy Carney at the time. And my concern was that kids could go from kindergarten to graduation and never see a black teacher. It's fine, we have custodians, we have security, respectable positions to have, but we have children with more higher standards. And what they had done, they had given me at least four events each year where I bring in minority speakers. I've had scientists, world renowned science, laser scientists from GE. We have oncologists in the medical field. We've had lawyers. We have had all of these people, policemen, people in your community. We have got to let my kids know that there are jobs that are respectable in their community that are not a rapper or professional athlete. My concern is, by this time, every year since 2007, the schedule has been made up for when these events would happen and who the speakers would be. This year, I have had nothing. Dr. Turner was supposed to notify me last week about these events. I haven't heard a word. And I think this is something, and this is my opinion, I would caution about being united with the anti-bias task force because they look just like you. I'd caution myself because the way that they were appointed was disgraceful. I was quoted, I was quoted in a meeting and they said that, Bobby Brown said, "The anti-bias task force is useless." Bobby Brown said that. Bobby Brown did say that. But Bobby Brown said that about 10 years ago, when none of the people that were dismissed from the anti-bias task force was on that committee. I had represented a young man, a black man, who was the only black man working at Northfield Docks. He had a noose hung up in his workplace. I took it to the anti-bias task force. They told me that their job was to point me in the right direction to get help. That's when I said the anti-bias task force was useless. It had nothing to do with the people that were recently dismissed from the anti-bias task force. As a matter of fact, they were the ones that were giving me hope, to say that the anti-bias task force was finally getting some teeth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
All right, I'm sticking to this time limit. So, yeah. Ray Ankrum, Riverhead Charter School. Racial reckoning is happening all over the country. The district has some healing to do regarding the latest incidents, and I welcome them the space to work that out. But if you ever want to understand the underbelly of a community, go to the racialized posts from the local and the news review and park in the comments. It tells you everything you want to know about how the community feels about its most marginalized communities. What hasn't been mentioned in all of this, these grandiose presentations, we didn't hear anything about student achievement. Recently, New York state test scores were released. The embargo was released. We heard nothing in this meeting about how black kids and Latino kids or white kids are doing in this district, right? And so I want you guys to hold yourselves to account in terms of how you are being transparent to this district about how students are performing in this district. There's no reason why a press release should not have gone out to parents about how their kids are doing so that everybody in the community can hold you guys to account. God bless, good night.
Thank you, Mr. Ankrum. Do we have any other comments? Do we have any online comments? Okay, thank you.
I promise I'll make it quick. Heather McHugh, resident of Riverhead. First, I want to thank you, the board, for paying for the insurance, including the PTOs on the insurance. It does allow us then to revert money that we're spending every year for insurance back directly to our students in hopes of bringing in programs that maybe we can work with individuals that I spoke tonight and bring in some of those programs to help our children. As to transportation, yes, I will agree, there's been improvements. However, one major aspect was left out of the presentation today by the acting superintendent. What has been left out is the massive pickup and drop off at the elementary school levels. My children go to Riley Avenue. If you are anywhere near Riley Avenue in the morning, before school, or in the afternoon, you cannot get down that road. The buses are backed up on Riley Avenue trying to get in because of all the parent drop offs and pickups. Specifically speaking to pickup, with the change in times, with, let's put it out there, without any community input at all, when the Board of Ed changed those times, it has created a huge problem for parents. Kids trying to make religious ed classes, parents trying to make doctor's appointments after school so they're not interrupting their child's education by pulling them out for doctor's appointments, now have an extremely small window to make those doctor's appointments. They have to pick up their kids from the school, which also means these parents are leaving work early potentially to make it to the school in time. Pickup at Riley Avenue can last for 40 minutes or more. This is when I go to the door, tell them my child's name, and it can take almost 40 minutes sometimes to get all the children out because of the backup at pickup. At the same time, parents can't wait for the bus to drop off at 4:20, 4:30, or later. So when you're discussing transportation, it's more than just the buses. It's also all of those kids that are no longer on the buses because the system has failed. And the security members, the security guards that are helping up with those drop off and pickups, God love them, because it is a very stressful time. Parents are angry at drop off and pickup, and understandably so. And so I do want to thank all of the staff at the schools that are helping and trying to get those kids in and out, but it is a disaster. The parking lot at Riley Avenue, I'm shocked there hasn't been a kid actually injured in that parking lot because it is so small and the cars are, and they're trying to circle the cars out as fast as possible. Someone is going to get hurt soon and something needs to change with the pickup and drop off. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McHugh. Yes, Mr. Brown?
I forgot. Who is it that I can talk to to schedule my program?
You could contact me.
Okay.
Okay, and then I can relay your information to our building principals.
Then you will what?
I can relay the information to the building principals if you wish.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any other comments?
Good evening. Micah Braspo with Transpar. I would like the opportunity to just publicly state that some of the information that was shared tonight with regards to the transportation update, I think is dated from the last couple of weeks, and so we look forward to the opportunity to present the information that has changed with regards to the significant improvement in pickups and drop offs, particularly as it pertains to the comments with regards to parent traffic. It's important to note that many of these schools have, do not have appropriate infrastructure, and that is some of the items that we have discussed directly with principals. But our team has been actively collecting through the available tools and resources that the district has with GPS, some of which may be changing if the district does proceed with the contract with Transfinder. The majority of buses are arriving on time to schools. We've even had communication with charter school principal who indicated on September 21st that 10 out of 12 buses are arriving on time. So we look forward to the opportunity for the most accurate and recent information to be able to be communicated to the community. And all of the information that was requested with regards to routes were provided directly to the superintendent weeks ago. We know that in interim leadership, maybe that is not something the current board and interim leadership has, but we invite you to make sure that you have that opportunity to review the information that has been shared directly with the superintendent. And then with regards to the evacuation drills, those have all been completed. And again, that was information from the September 13th Health and Safety Committee meeting. So again, we look forward to making sure that everyone is aware of the great work that the Transportation Department has done. I do think it's important to note that with regards to changing routes, because you're a unionized district in terms of your leadership, or in terms of your driver pool, you cannot necessarily make significant changes to routes without them having the opportunity to reselect those routes. They bid on a route, they're awarded a certain number of hours. So even with changes being made, there's a process that has to be gone through, which is why when we talked about four to six weeks to allow things to both settle in and to review data and information, that it's important to have that information, but you also have to make sure that the proper process is followed, or you would be in violation of union contract. We were on site this week to collect even more detailed ridership and time information that gives us actual data. What's in your routing software system is what's planned, but the reality of traffic, inclement weather, the number of students that are riding on a daily basis, all of that information changes the plan. And so we've been collecting that data, we'll be collecting more data this week, and look forward to continuing to improve upon the service to students. But in speaking with principals, and again, trying to collect feedback from our non-public school members as well, it has been a significant improvement. And while we know that there were issues with the times in terms of shifting the elementary schools, we did work with district leadership directly to review what were our options. Changing high school and middle school times were not an option, and so we understand that those changes were things that had to be made within the confines of constraints. And again, we look forward to the opportunity to speak to any other questions and concerns once the board and interim leadership has the opportunity to review the most up-to-date transportation information. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, but I do have a comment. And I will say that the information that I have shared in my report this evening is current. That information that I have received is directly given to me by my building principals. And I know that my building principals are out monitoring the arrivals and the departures of their students.
It's understood. It's unfortunate we did not have the opportunity to speak to that during the administrators' meeting that we thought was scheduled today because we too have been speaking with building principals and for the routes that have experienced some challenges, two of which were at Roanoke. There have been changes that have been made effective this week, and we've spoken directly to those principals as well. So we spoke last week in administrators' meeting where principals had the opportunity to share their concerns. The primary concern that was shared was the amount of parent drop off traffic in the two routes that were communicated with regards to Roanoke were those that we've been working on this week. So we look forward to the opportunity to speak to that in the administrators' meeting tomorrow.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Do we have any online comments, Lisa?
Yes, there is one.
Yes, there is. Mr. Dorr?
Chris Dorr, Kelverton. I saw in the agenda that there's two law firms that were being hired for investigations, one at $220 an hour and the other at $300 an hour. Do we know how long we expect these to go, these investigations?
We don't comment on personnel. Yeah, we can't.
I'm not asking, I'm just asking, how long of a timeframe are we thinking that this investigation is going to take?
Still, that's a part of the personnel investigation.
They are, the directives from the board are to do it as expeditiously, as expeditiously, but as thoroughly as possible.
Okay, I saw that in the agenda that the law firm that's at 220 an hour has no cap. So you're just going to let them keep going as long as they want? And is the one at $300 an hour, does that have a cap?
There are no caps on the number of hours the investigation will take as long as it needs to take.
So we're writing these two law firms a blank check?
No. The hours have to be submitted, but the investigations have to be conducted as the investigators deem fit.
Okay. Second question. We had the presentation from Transfinder. Was that part of the huge contract that we signed with Transpar, or is that going to be an additional cost?
We've only just received the presentation tonight.
Okay. So there's no, we haven't made a decision if we're going to go with Transfinder, or we don't know if that's included in the Transpar contract?
We haven't been able to speak as a board yet.
Okay, with the amount of money that we spent on Transpar, I would hope that this was being resolved by now. We're in October. Usually, before this company came in, we did have a hiccup in our busing, but it usually worked itself out within the first two weeks at school. And now we're in October and we're still, some schools, an hour delay. Not money well spent, I don't think. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dorr.
Good evening. Mike Carver. I'm a parent, lifelong resident here in Riverhead. I'm also another public educator. So I know the system. I understand the personnel issues you can't discuss. What I am here tight is, I'm looking at this gentleman here, Dr. Gallotti. I know him personally and professionally for over 20 years. So before we start spending money on more search committees for superintendents or administrators, that somebody to come in and help plug the leak here about what's going on during this chaos, I'll ask you, I've seen it, I saw it happen with another superintendent here that got us through austerity, got us through COVID, and we said, search to the outside for somebody to come into Riverhead to fix the problems. I hear problems here tonight, right? I think part of the reason why we don't have solutions is because we haven't had consistency or any kind of stability in our administrative office. Dr. Gallotti here, I'm just asking you, again, I know you can't discuss personnel, whatever we do here, whatever you do here, I ask you to give him whatever resources he needs and if this, I know he's on, correct me if I'm wrong, the 23rd of October? Is that the timeframe so far? That's only what, two weeks away? I'm not sure how long this is going to go. I know you're probably not sure. Mr. Dorr, who spoke of asking about special counsel fees, don't start spending money on searching to the outside to find somebody to be a temporary fix. You got to fix right here, give him the resources he needs to help fix the problems. That's what I'm here to ask you for. It's a tough job, I get it. But before we can answer and solve any of the problems that are being discussed here tonight, we've got to fix the problems that are inside where people are trying to solve those problems and get some stability. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Online comments, Lisa?
Yes, there is one. This is from Sharon Park in Aquabog. Last week, I attended the open house for my daughter who is attending ninth grade at the high school this year. I was thoroughly impressed by the classes offered in the high school, as well as the teachers and the focus on the overall student. Freshman seminar is mandatory ninth grade class, which began last year as a way to help catch up for gaps caused by the COVID pandemic. The teachers and staff are focused on the students, how to teach them to think outside of the box, problem solve, work together, and overall life skills, both in school and after graduation. The high school offers college-level courses students can take, as well as an incomparable amount of hands-on VOSI's programs for job training. Riverhead is different, as many districts do not have these opportunities for students. Riverhead is consistently in the news and discussions within the community for bad occurrences and sometimes gets a bad reputation, but we should be seeing this and celebrating the amazing things that students in the Riverhead Central School District are accomplishing, whether it be through academics, music, drama, community service, sports, et cetera, as well. And that was it.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Yes?
Yes, my name is Kathleen McCour. I'm a parent, I live in Aquabog. I have one student left in the district. Two questions, two comments. Mrs. Redmond mentioned that we have kiosks that the kids swipe in and out of with the ID cards. At the PTO meeting at the high school, it was brought up that there is no kiosk that students swipe in and out of the portables. So at any given time, we have a couple hundred kids and we don't know where they are because they theoretically are supposed to swipe in in the morning, but they don't have to go into the building. They go right into the portable. So for first period, we don't know where those students are. If there is an emergency, you don't know where those students are. When they come out of the portable and they go back into the building, they don't necessarily have to swipe back into the building. They just go into their classes. So it seems that there is a disconnect. I know that there was a conversation held very briefly about how we can rectify that situation, whether we can purchase another portable or handheld scanner for the security guards that open the portable in the morning to let the students in. But I think that that is a really big concern if we're going to start talking about safety. And Dr. Gallotti, I know this is a conversation we've had umpteen times. We have so many committees in this school. We have a Regents waiting committee. We specifically asked you during that committee to expand that committee to people in this district that are black, that are Spanish. to people in this district that are black, that are Spanish, that are Asian, that are Polish, that are every color that represents our school district. And you told us no. You told us no. Every single district in this school going forward for any topic should have people of color on it. There is no excuse for that not to be. There is no excuse for our building principals and for our administrators and for our teachers and for all of our staff to not represent this district in color.
That was not the request that you made. The request you made was to have additional parents represented on the committee.
We said that the parents...
And there were sufficient parents.
Wait, you know what, Dr. Galati, I'm sorry. With all due respect, it's my speaking time, not yours.
I am.
So with all due respect, I clearly, clearly asked you, number one, for us to send out a questionnaire or a, some sort of a Google form polling parents on how they felt about the Regents Waiting Committee. And we clearly said that the district committee needed to be open to reflect the entire district. And we ended up with the district with eight white teachers and eight white parents and eight white administrators. So we can pay lip service to a DEI committee, but it seems really disingenuous to me that the only committee that we want people of color on is the DEI committee. People of color in this district, I'm sorry, I'm a white woman. I don't know if I should be talking about this without being disrespectful. But going forward, we need to make a concerted effort to welcome people to every single committee in this school. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Hello, my name's Michelle Perez and I am a sophomore at Riverhead High School. This is like not part of anything, but tomorrow is the senior volleyball game and it's also a determination of a playoff game. Which will be the, if we win, it'll be the first time in 10 years since Riverhead volleyball has made it to the playoffs. It is very like important that the Board of Ed and people like from the school support those games. Like, no one comes to support the volleyball games. It's like a little known sport. It's very important that we have that because not many sports make it off to the playoffs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Rangeli. I'm a resident here in Riverhead. I grew up in Malvern. If you look up geographic makeup of Malvern, it was 50/50. And all I hear here in this district is negativity. And that young lady just got up and she just asked for support. Your children of this district, your student of this district just came to all of you and asked for support. We are role models, your role models, everyone here is role models. And let's look at the makeup of your school district. The people that make my children smile every day are the hard-working teachers that are primarily born and raised in Riverhead. And Riverhead has always been a diverse culture, as far as I have learned so far. But what I'm starting to see is, is that the top is too heavy. And you have to allow people like your students to tell you what is going on. Now, we're going to learn from children because I learn from my kid every day. And my daughter sometimes starts out a sentence like, "I don't mean to be rude" when she's describing what her friend looks like. But what's happening here is I think again, it's too heavy on the top. And we have to maybe, in your investigations, look at who is being hired? And who, who are we paying? And where are these titles and positions coming from? And in your investigations in your big law firms, are they really looking at the chain of the friends that people are hiring and where they're coming from? And are they coming from what other districts? And then what is going on inside of your schools? I have to tell you, I live in this community. I spend most of my time out in the street doing my job and at ballfields. And I got to know a lot of your teachers. And I have to tell you, they're standing next to me, some of them without children, supporting our children. And she's right. I don't see the people from the top. And I don't see most of the board members here, Mr. President. I have never seen you at a ballfield. I have never seen you work with any of our children in our district. We have to start listening to what the kids, and guess what? They're going to just follow our lead. If they see how we treat each other negatively, they're going to start treating each other negatively. So, very smart young woman up here, point out the positive. Aquabog mother wrote in, point out the positive. We have so many amazing teachers in this district that have raised my children above and beyond to get them to where they need to be. And you know what? They're the ones again, that travel to Bellport to watch my daughter. No kids, but yet they're traveling to watch my kid play. And all the other students, and what's nice is, the kids look up to them. These are teachers that work very, very hard and the camaraderie inside your school for some of them sucks.
Thank you, Ms. Rangeli.
Hi, I'm Kristen Hughes. I am in Riverhead and I currently have three children still in the district. I had one graduate two years ago. I'm extremely involved in the school and I was on the Regents Waiting Committee. And Dr. Galati, we absolutely asked you to expand the amount of parents that this reached because we said we did not represent the majority of the school district. That was the reason why we asked you to expand the Regents Waiting Committee. Not because we wanted to ask everybody's opinion, but we said to you, we and the students that were in that committee did not represent the district. We said we were two middle-class white women that did not represent a majority of the district. So I'm just wondering, are you going to do that?
We will be returning back to the committee sometime in November or December.
Are you going to expand to other parents?
We will restructure the committee.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hughes. Any other comments? Seeing none, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Oh, yes, yeah, yeah. Can I have a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss the particular employment of a person or a corporation? Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Can I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? And motion passes. Thank you all so much. We won't be returning back into, into public session, but we'll have our next meeting two weeks from tonight, October 23rd. Thank you very much.